Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Hagland.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Neistrom. Five of the six present.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. First up, the approval of the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. District recognitions.
Thank you. You can sure tell that the school year is in session again because as the days go by, we get more and more recognitions to recognize our students and staff for outstanding achievements. So it's fun to be back with a long list tonight. Want to begin by congratulating our special education staff. As the Minnesota Department of Education has awarded our district with a certificate of achievement for ensuring individual student due process records meet or exceed requirements and are reflective of the dedication of the administration, school staff, and community on September 6, 2019. When given this award a week ago by Jen Johnson from the Palbonian Education Co-op, she said in her, I believe it was seventeen-year history that she's had as a director, she has never had a school district be perfect in their compliance with all of their records. And so to receive this honor is really something to be very proud of. So staff and our administration and everybody for seeing to it that we're meeting the needs of our children.
Because that's a lot of paperwork.
That's a lot of paperwork. You are right.
Terrible.
So congratulations to them. Congratulations also to Sarah Nesham and Leah Primusberger, who have been named a semifinalist for the 65th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations also to Sean Paulus for being named a commended student in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. Those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. Our next recognition goes to Brayden and Bennett Capel, BHS sophomores, for being named Outstanding Youth Volunteers of the Year. They will be honored on October 4, 2019 at the Distinguished Service Awards Banquet. And finally, it's very fun today to congratulate the Brainerd Public Schools Middle Level Alternative Program as they were selected the People's Choice Award for their vegan chili at the United Way Chili Cook-Off last week. They decided to try something very different and make a vegan chili that was done with sweet potatoes. And sure enough, they won the whole contest for the People's Choice Award. So congratulations to Jacinta McFadden, Eric Geske, Sidney Gentry, Zoe Shepherd, Elena Berry, Kylie Johnsrud, Lucas Popham, and advisors Jackie Johnasek and McKinley Anderson. So congratulations to everyone. It's so fun to have all these recognitions starting again with a great school year. And that's all.
All right. Thank you. Next up is our public comment. Period where we have in our meeting, we welcome your comments. We follow Board Policy 206. We enforce a three-minute limit. This is not the opportunity to make any allegations to an employee. If you have a complaint with an employee, you're to file it in writing with the superintendent. And there will be no verbal interaction, no questions and answers. But you have three minutes to talk to us. Is there anyone who wanted to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Barb Lopka, and I'm here to, first of all, thank the Lord for the freedom of religion in our country. And I feel that it's important for us to remember that we all have choices that we can make. And so several years ago, my husband and I studied in the Book of Colossians. And so I'm going to read a prayer to you that I wrote with my husband. And I just want to lift this up to the Lord. Excuse me. Dearest Jehovah Jireh, we come before your throne lifting up this prayer to you for ourselves, for all our family members, our friends, and those we have yet to touch, all the ministries that we support, all the members of the family, the government, all the houses of prayer, every educational system, businesses, medical professions, entertainment professions, elderly care facilities, sports, military, media, music, TV, law enforcement, judicial systems, and everyone that is in a jail or a prison, working or a guest, the prodigals and those who have never accepted Jesus Christ as their Savior. Please help all of us to be filled with the knowledge of your will through all spiritual wisdom and spiritual understanding. Please help each of us to walk in a manner worthy of you. Please help each of us to steadily grow and be increasingly aware of the knowledge that comes only from you. Please help all of us to be invigorated and strengthened with all power according to the might of your glory. Please help all of us to endure, to be patient, strengthened, and work together as a team, being consistent and constant in prayer. Please help all of us to remember to be joyful in giving thanks for all things and to display the fruit of the Spirit wherever we go and with whomever we're in contact daily. Please help all of us to hear, please hear our cries for all the people of the world, and please help us all to put our prayers into action. In Jesus' name. Amen. As a prayer warrior for the Minnesota Brainerd School District 181, I retired from teaching, you know, thirteen years ago. And I stood in this room for many, many years after I retired. And I appreciate all that you have done in this school district because we have to remember, we have freedom. And so some trust in chariots, some trust in horses, but I'm going to trust in the name of the Lord. And people need to make up their mind because heaven is real and hell is hot. So thank you for listening, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Is there anyone else that had a comment tonight? What's your name?
My name is Mitch Brinks. I have children in the Brainerd School District, and I'm here tonight because of the topic of evolution that was discussed at the last meeting. Watching the recording of the last meeting, it was stated by staff regarding evolution that, quote, "If we ever find evidence to disprove it, we would amend that because that is what you can do with a theory." But there hasn't been any evidence presented at this time, end quote. So that's the reason I'm here, to suggest that the evidence is out there and just needs to be presented. Many of the new scientific discoveries related to adaptation, archaeology, geology, genetics, paleontology, all challenged Darwinian evolution. I have a master's of science degree, but I still enjoy learning and have adjusted my own faith many times on faith, politics, and other areas of life as new information has come about. And that's really what I want for our students, just to have all the latest scientific evidence related to the topic of origins, so that they can critically think and come to their own conclusions as I have over the years. As I learned from the video of the last meeting, evolution seems to be integrated throughout the entire curriculum as it was selected as one of the top nine power standards. Since this is a top priority for Brainerd schools, it seems appropriate to spend additional time examining all sides of the issue and critically examining the claims made by the theory of evolution. Two of the main objections to evolution are, one, life has never been observed to come from non-life; and two, there is no known observable process in which new genetic information can be added to an organism's genetic code. I don't know if you know this, but the guy by the name of Francis Crick, one of the guys that discovered DNA, and not a Christian to my knowledge, stated that the origin of life is one of the greatest unsolved mysteries of science. So these are some of the many problems with evolution. And based on what I heard at the last meeting, there's a disconnect between what Brainerd is teaching and what the science is saying. I ask that the school board, staff, and administration look into the science against evolution and consider either, A, presenting all sides of the issue so students can make up their own mind, or at a minimum, consider lowering the priority level of the topic in the future until all sides are able to be presented. To that end, I would be willing to pay to bring in a PhD-level scientist to present the scientific evidence against evolution. There are many qualified individuals and organizations out there that could do this without bringing in religion or even mentioning God, if that is a concern. I have a handout that I'd like to pass around. It is from the Institute for Creation Research and has a section in it on some of the latest findings against evolution. Their material is very technical and above my head many times, but... Not sure the protocol of handing this out, but... But I'm sure they could tailor it, or another organization could tailor it toward a high school-level audience. If nothing else, it's good nighttime reading material for you to put you to sleep. I can leave a few extras here as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brinks. Is there another comment?
Doug Kern. And anyway, you know, we've learned over the last couple of weeks, everybody's got an opinion. It's just amazing how many opinions are out there. I am so proud of the school district and the things that are going on with the school district right now. You know, having, you know, Sue called the president, really voiced everything. That'd make you all vice presidents. But anyway, you know, I was kind of sad that the dispatch put that in there because they need to have the correct titles for you people because you're all important. The things that you guys are doing, and it just amazes me how everything is coming together like clockwork. And whether we believe, whatever we believe is what we believe. And in the last couple of weeks, we've been told what we believe. We've had so many people tell us what we do believe, what we don't believe, and it's like, really? It was kind of informative to find out some of the things that we, you know, didn't realize we were. But anyway, I am just really proud of the school district and the things they do. I'm proud of the fact that they hold up to what they say they do. As far as the integrity toward the students and handling the things that they do, it's just, it's amazing. I would never expect any of you to know everything. As far as the building projects you guys got going on, they're awesome. And I would never expect you to not have people that know the subjects that you need to know. When you have questions about finances, you ask somebody who's in the finance department. When you have questions about science, you ask people in the science department. The questions that were asked, I think, were legitimate, and people say were disingenuous. But I'm just proud of each one of you, of the school district. It's awesome. So, yeah, good, good. There you go.
Thank you. Are there any other comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead with our meeting. Building project update. Brandon and Scott are both here.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Scott Woodmore, project manager for a high school. On the agenda, we have two items for the high school, one of which is change event number one. This change arose from our building plan review for plumbing through Mendoli, Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, sorry. As a result of that, we had to change a couple of tie-in points related to sanitary sewer water in Fifth Street and also the storm sewer, as well as change the composition of some of the materials because of Mendoli comments related to storm and sanitary crossing a water main. That information was in your packet, so you should have had an opportunity to review that. Do you have any questions regarding change event one? Fantastic. The other item for the high school is the orchestra pit in the Performing Arts Center. As it was designed or approved in design development and later on in the construction documents, the original pit size was 836 square feet, and it was designed for fifty musicians. We received a request from Lakes Area Music Festival to take another look at that and see if we could make it work with seventy musicians. And the team at WSN has provided a solution. It would mean increasing the size, moving the west wall, which would be the back wall of the orchestra pit, out ten feet, and bringing our square footage up to 1,343 square feet. This cost will be approximately an additional $80,000, of which a donor has offered to fundraise for some of those funds or all of the funds.
Can I clarify that a minute? So part of it would be donated from a donor, and the rest would be raised through volunteers through Lakes Area Music Festival. And even the school district might pitch in with some of that, but to raise the $80,000 that would go towards that. So there'd be two parts to that, so.
Excellent.
Sorry to interrupt, but...
Oh, no, not at all. I'm sure you've all drove past the high school. You'll notice that digging is underway, and we are starting in the north Performing Arts Edition. So this is something that we need to know tonight if we need to make those accommodations and get that wall moved. Questions?
I just, one question, this might be more directed to you. I just want to make sure that, this was a request from the Lakes Area Music Festival, but our internal staff at the high school are supportive of it?
Correct. And one thing that's kind of interesting down in the orchestra pit, if it's a smaller orchestra, at times there will be a curtain included in this down in the pit so that it will help with the acoustics, whether we have a small orchestra or a large orchestra for whatever kind of event is going on in the Performing Arts Center.
So then the stage is the same size unless you use the orchestra pit, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. There'll be two different pit, well, actually, three different. One to include the whole thing, one would leave a smaller opening for the smaller school-based performances, and then one would be a larger removable section for the Lakes Area Music Festival, or any venue with a larger...
So lots of options.
Scott, I meant to ask last week in our oversight, when those panels are put on and it's covered, are the seams tight? And there must be some structure underneath so there isn't give for like the dance and those performances?
That's correct. It's supported from vertical columns from below.
Cool. Thanks.
So in terms of no net gain or there's no more space building-wise to be able to make room for the seventy-member orchestra? So you're going to be taking it from the stage, that's right? You're going to pull that out?
It'll be undermining, well, I wouldn't even call it undermining. We're just extending the excavation of the orchestra pit because the dance, or correction, the theater floor stage is at ground level, zero elevation, and your orchestra pit would be below grade. So you're just extending that pit further underneath the stage behind it.
West.
So if you'd envision, this is the stage area, and this is the orchestra pit, everything up top stays the same, it's just that underneath it gets larger.
So you won't be getting any less staged?
That's correct. Stage is staying the same size.
Stage or seating.
Okay. Good, good, perfect.
Saves the size of the stage. It doesn't affect the seating. It really just fits perfectly into the footprint and just enlarges below grade essentially.
And I'm assuming that's done other places, and this is going to be the first time that something like this happens. It's standard.
Yep. We're extending it about ten feet approximately.
Okay.
It's like another 130 cubic yards of excavation, so it's pretty minor.
Great. Thank you.
And the acoustics of that, how does it, I'm sure you guys don't know, but how does the sound come out of there compared to being on the stage? Do they have microphones and stuff in there? Do you know, Barb? Mr. Stubbs, do you know?
There are pickups in there for the people down in the orchestra pit, and then that's why you have a larger opening up top. When there's a larger orchestra in there, it opens up more, so more of that sound can come out. I guess I'm not an acoustician, but that was my understanding of it.
Is that right, Mike?
I would agree with that, Scott.
And we're using a design expert in theaters, correct? So...
That's correct. Shula Shook was heavily involved in there. They're the design consultant for the whole Performing Arts Auditorium section.
I'm sorry, the actual acoustician. Scott, can I just pretend? She gave us that information, or she did confirm that.
So nobody's losing out on anything, or space, or storage space, or...
No, it was just going to be dirt before, compacted dirt. We have to haul 130 yards back, is all.
Very good. Any other comments, then? You're going to go ahead?
Okay, one final thing for action later on, and this is just an extension of... So this is just an extension of the current services of Braun Intertech. They are currently retained to provide all of the geotechnical surveys. They do the soil borings and make the recommendations on how to handle the soils and the spread footings and everything. And this is just to continue the service into the actual testing portion. Talked with Earl up front. Braun is a desired partner in this. We've, again, circled back with Reed at Oversight Committee. We've talked about this. Braun is a desired, the desired testing firm, just to keep that continuity from the existing and current design for the geotechnical and just continue that services, continue those on with Braun. No dollar amount because they bill per test. We have a master agreement that they charge, you know, per concrete test, per dirt test, per steel inspection, et cetera. So they just, they bill up to a budget. This is budgeted in the project. We're not asking for any additional funds or change orders, anything like that. Just request to continue using Braun for these services. Fair. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, the approval of the minutes from the last school board meeting, which was, it says here, August, but it was September...
September 9.
September 9.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Consent calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our action items. Approval of the expanded orchestra pit.
I saw move approval of the expanded orchestra pit. Bringing it to December, seventy-member orchestra pit, as discussed here earlier.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Next up, the approval of the Braun Intertech that Brandon just talked to us about.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Blacklance. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, the approval of the, to authorize Superintendent Larson to approve change event 01 of the Brainerd High School North Campus project for the amount up to $72,614.72.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Campbell. Any discussion?
So this comes out of our contingency fund, but the high school has quite a large contingency fund, correct?
Yes, and we hadn't touched the contingency at this point. And actually, when I met with Brandon this afternoon, it looks like they're even doing, I'm sure, Scott, you're working on this as well, to try to cut down this cost for this change order. And again, this is a result of the procurement that we talked about last week. And so we're really happy that we're able to bring it to the full board and be able to take care of this action right away tonight, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, the approval of the Director of Teaching and Learning to be identified as the official with authority.
Impressive title for a man who essentially just pushes a button and says, yes, you may. The individual with authority is the gatekeeper for the district on how people using the secure access to the MDE website have access to it. So whether they're putting in discipline reports, Mars, financial reports through SERVES, it's just the management of who has the correct credentials in order to access what portions of the MDE secure reporting system.
I think you should get a name tag with that on.
I was thinking that, too.
I was thinking more of like a scepter and a crown. Pass the wolf. Not a tiara.
They have my Burger King.
Get a Whopper with that, I'm in.
Okay, does anybody have questions, or are you going to go ahead?
So move approval as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion?
This is a resolution.
This is a resolution.
So moved.
So we have to have a roll call vote.
You should have documentation also for your signature that goes with this.
Okay. Okay. I'll sign it. Jen?
Charles Blacklance.
Um, hold on.
Yes.
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Hagland?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
All present in favor.
All righty, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, the approval of the preliminary 2019 payable 2020 levy at the maximum. Mercy's going to talk to us.
Good evening. Exciting topic tonight, the 2020 levy. So in front of you, or in your packet, is the complete memo that goes into detail. So I just have a brief summary. The timeline, the September 6, MDE prepared and distributed the first draft of the levy limit worksheets. And then since then, they've had four additional runs. They'll continue to run and update as information is given to them, or if it's been updated. September 23, tonight, we were looking for approval of the proposed levy amount at the maximum. And then mid-November, the county will mail out the proposed property tax statements based on that maximum amount. And then December 9, we will have a final levy hearing and certification at the regular school board meeting where we can determine if that amount is what you guys would like to approve. So the 2020 proposed tax levy is for calendar year 2020. It's recognized in fiscal year '21 for us, so 2020 to 2021. The estimated increase as of 9/20 is 1.61%. And this is based on our projected 2021 enrollment. And then I did put in there the preliminary 18, 19, and then the estimates for 19, 20, and 20, 21. Our levy consists of the general fund, the community service fund, the general debt service, and then the OPEB debt service. And you can see the majority of that does go to the general fund and the general debt service. So for the last 10 years, our average has been about 4.22%. And then the last five years, it's been 5.23. So this year, with the 1.61, it is lower than our average. And again, that is the maximum set by state statute. We cannot go above that amount. And again, that is the maximum set by state statute. We cannot go above that amount. One change this year is the local optional levy, which is on this summary sheet. If you go down, it says first tier board-approved referendum. That is the three hundred dollars that the board authorized in July of eighteen. That is now being rolled up into the local optional revenue, which is that first line on this summary sheet. So they, they are the same thing. It's just they're moving it from one lined item to another line in the levy. The major changes this year in our levy is the LTFM equal and unequalized amounts. Our building and land lease amounts have went up significantly. And then general debt service, and this all correlates with our facilities plan. All of it is related to that.
So it's all voter-approved increases?
Essentially, yes. Because when we passed the referendum, we passed all of the buckets and the funding mechanisms that we were going to use. One thing I did want to note is our building land lease authority. There is a maximum authority and it, we are at ninety-six point three percent. And last year, we were at about fifty-six. And that was all a part of the plan, but just wanted to make you aware that we are getting closer to that maximum authority. And then these are our other funds, and community ed has a significant decrease. So in pay two thousand seventeen, we had levied sixty-two thousand, five hundred. And the actual expenses were thirty-three thousand, three seventy-eight, twenty-three. So how that levy works is we can levy what our estimate is, and then when the actuals come in, we do have an adjustment that flows through. And quite a few of our levies operate that way. Where when we look at actuals, if we had levied more than what the actuals were, an adjustment will flow through on our later levies. So that's the reason why there's a significant decrease in community ed this year. And then this is just an update of our current debt. So two thousand eighteen B and C are both refundings of our OPEB and school building bonds. And then the two thousand eighteen D and two thousand nineteen A are the new issuances that we just recently did with the facilities plan. And then market values, just wanted to talk about that a little bit. Market values, this is historically what the increases have been. They are not finalized for two thousand nineteen yet. That, the county will finalize that after we get all our information in. And historically, it's been about three point one percent in the last five years, an increase. So I would expect it'd be around that for this year. And then the referendum market value is taking the market value less all of the exclusions, for example, ag and seasonal rec. And then we have another calculation, net tax capacity. And that's taking those classifications and multiplying it by the classification's tax rate. And all of these amounts are used in our levy when it's calculating out what our maximum is. So it is the recommendation to approve the proposed two thousand twenty property tax levy at the maximum. And then that way, it allows for any adjustments that flow through after this board meeting for us to still approve that maximum amount. It's not a fixed dollar amount yet. That'll come in December. Are there any questions on that?
I'll move the approval of the preliminary two thousand nineteen payable two thousand twenty levy at the maximum.
Second.
Yeah, we have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Marcy. Next up, Brainerd Public Schools Foundation report.
We did not meet in between since last meeting.
All right, thank you. Curriculum report, Tim Murtha, the CIP update, continuous improvement.
Although we do need more runners for the homecoming run.
Yes, we do.
Need more runners.
It won't be me.
Raise your hand.
Tim?
Tim raised his hand. Here we go.
How long is the run?
Well, for you. Ten miles.
I don't know if my truck would make it that far, let alone me. Okay, what I'm sharing with you today as part of the curriculum update is an extension of the presentation I gave at the last board meeting. Going from the district continuous improvement plans that we had shared at that time to giving you the goals the individual sites have set in alignment with those plans. So this is what they'll be working towards during the year. Throughout the year, I'll be bringing forward exemplars of the work that sites and groups in the district are doing in fulfillment of these targets as we go through. So simply put, you have all the targets. You should see some form of alignment between the district site, district goal, down to the site's goal, and to the ACOMP goal. The district is not maintaining an ACOMP goal itself because it's not eligible for the bonus for making the goal. The only other piece of the report that I have for you tonight is next month in October, Mrs. Inga Britson from the, our American Indian Education Coordinator will be sharing some of the summer activities that she and her staff have worked on. And some of the activities are coming forward that we're doing in partnership with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And that's this month's curriculum report.
All right, thank you. Business Services Report.
All right, so in your packet is the enrollment report. It has, the first column is how we ended the year last year as of May first. And then the next column is the preliminary budget, the ADMs. And then the very first column is the enrollment as of nine twenty student count. So I just want to emphasize that that preliminary budget is ADMs. So if we get paid for one student for the full year, it's one ADM. And then the student count is actual headcount. So that student is not here all year. It would be, for example, if they were here half a year, it'd be a point five. And then we'll continue to update this as each month and present it to the board. Are there any questions on that?
Do you know why the early childhood is so much lower this year?
So we gain kids throughout the year.
Okay, I've been told that before.
Yes.
Then my only other question is, under the ADMs, the last numbers, what are those, the three, five, seven, one, and three, seven, one?
That is weighted. So we are paid for one, each K through six is one point zero, and then seven through twelve is a one point two. So then the ADMs is then converted to the weighted average. They must have somehow deleted that.
K through six?
Yep. I'll update that. And then also in your report, packet is the financial report. And if you exclude the construction fund and then also the debt service funds, since they were unique last year, we are at about five point four six percent from the original budget. And then this year for eight, nineteen, twenty, taking the original budget column last, for the fiscal year-to-date activity, we're at five point six six. So an increase of about point two percent, which is, we're tracking nicely. Are there any questions on that?
Marcy, the twelfth grade at five eighty-eight? That seems really high.
That's normally where we lose them throughout the year. So it is starting off higher than usual, but we'll probably start to see that number decline as we go throughout the year.
It's always been a big class, but it's actually, if you look at the eleventh grade from last year.
It's quite a bit higher.
A lot. It'd be interesting to know why that is.
Baby boom.
That's a good thing, though.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
And it's been really nice because our numbers have been tracking very solid since the first day of school. We have, in fact, we've increased the number of children that we've had since school started. So we're watching that very carefully and tracking it closely.
Just anecdotally, I talked to someone and they said they've talked to several people that are thinking of moving here. And part of their reason is because of the new school plan, so I think it'll happen.
That's exciting.
Big difference in your community when you have these new schools.
Well, very good, Marcy. That's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Well, I want to start my report. I get all the fun stuff tonight, but I want to start my report by saying happy birthday to Director Campbell. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Just on my way over here today, I was, I heard it was your birthday, and so I told our chair that it was important that we recognize you, so.
And that's why I'm old Reed and he's young Reed.
Old and young Reed. Reed one and two, so it's, yeah, it's exciting all the way around, so great. Yep, happy birthday to you. Also, with that being said, next week is homecoming for the Warriors. And at all of your tables, you're going to see just a really very cool sheet that's been made up by our communications department, Carla Sand and Cory Reynolds, to explain all the exciting activities that are going to be happening at homecoming, starting next Monday, a week from today. A couple of changes, though, that I want you to know, and that is that the Warrior football game is no longer on Saturday. It's going to be on Friday night. There's going to be a really fun community tailgating party and get-together prior to the game. And then at seven o'clock, we'll be silencing the Sabres at that time with the dance to follow that evening. As Director Campbell said just a few minutes ago, on Saturday, though, there is the Warrior Run. And so we still are looking for people to sign up for that run. And that will be our last event for homecoming during the week. But if you look, every day is, has a really fun theme related to home. The first day is home run, where you wear your sports jerseys and sportswear. Tuesday is make yourself at home, so can wear comfy clothes or pajamas. I'm, I'm thinking maybe more like sweats rather than, you know, who knows? Third day is homegrown, dress like a farmer or in your flannel, so all the fun apparel that's out. We're hoping the entire community will get involved in these this year. On Thursday, we have home away from home, so dress as a tourist. On Friday, there, it's called no place like home, and so we're going to be wearing all of our blue, white, and silver, all of our Warrior wear that day and really showing that school spirit that we have and, and celebrating that. So please, we're, we're really trying to make this a huge community event this year. And so anything that our community can get involved in and participate in, you'll see it on this sheet. And we look forward to all the fun festivities next week. Also, that being said, a couple other things. Tomorrow, we're going to be having meetings to talk about our branding again, on what it means to be a Warrior. And so we're going to continue that discussion in the afternoon. Thursday, I have my first lunch with Lane with the high school, and Janet and I have been preparing that all day today. So we're excited about getting everyone, getting the kids together and hearing from them again about what's going really great in their school and, and what they would like to see as we, as we vision for the future. Also, that day is a really exciting celebration to celebrate Earl Woollett and his retirement. And so we welcome everyone to come to this room, starting at three o'clock on Thursday, to say thank you to Earl on a job very well done and to wish him very well in his retirement. We are going to miss him greatly. He's got big shoes to fill, Reed, but I, we're, we know you can do it. So anyway, we're really excited to celebrate with him, so. And one, one last thing that Brandon and I talked about today at our meeting is that we'd like to start scheduling meetings again to take tours of the facilities again. And right now, we're thinking maybe the meetings in November would be a good time because there could be quite a bit of change again within the facilities. And so we'll try to get those arranged if the board is interested in that, or if you want it sooner or later, just let us know. But right now, we're thinking November might be a good time again to, to show you the most recent updates, so that's my report.
Thank you. And our next regular school board meeting is October fourteenth at six, six p.m. I think you've covered all the rest of those. Any other business tonight? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
First from Haglen, second from Blacklance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys, we are adjourned.
That was a short meeting, shortest ever.